Mix it up.
Good evening. I now call to order the Planning Commission meeting for April eight seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Parker, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Well, everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful opportunity to live in this beautiful county, filled with many resources and respectful and kind people, and we ask, Lord, that you'll be with us and guide our conversations and our decisions this evening so that we can continue in this sense of kindness and gratitude and maintain our many blessings that you bring upon us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Our first item of business this evening is election of officers. Will the nominating committee please make its report for chair?
We nominate Dwayne Cosby for chair.
This nomination does require a motion and a vote.
I motion to make Dwayne Cosby chair.
Second.
All right. Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Cosby?
Aye.
Mr. Patuck?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Kimmerly?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Cosby.
At this point, we will switch chairs.
Ms. Parker, can we have the nominating committee please make a report for the vice chair?
Mr. Patuck?
We nominate Amanda Kowalski for vice chair.
And this nomination will also require a motion and a vote.
I move that the commission elect Amanda Kowalski as vice chair for a one-year term.
I second.
Mr. Kimmerly?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Patuck?
Aye.
Mr. Cosby?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Thank you.
We will now have the approval for the minutes for the Planning Commission regular meeting held on March the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, but before we do that, I would like to congratulate Madam Vice Chair, Amanda Kowalski, and would also like for the whole Planning Commission to just thank for just a moment, Mr. Kurt Patuck for his service, his diligence to serving Goochlin County as the chair this past year. Let's give him a hand, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have read the minutes and I have no comments, but I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Cosby?
Aye.
Mr. Patuck?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Kimmerly?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is new business. Our first item of new business is adoption of the two thousand and twenty-five Planning Commission bylaws. Ms. Spalding will go over the proposed changes to the bylaws, and then approval of the bylaws will require a motion and a vote.
All right. I believe you all have, good evening, I believe you all have a copy of these amended bylaws in your packet, and I'm going to go over the highlighted changes. I want you to know that I made these changes in consultation with your clerk, which is Ms. Ashley, and with the Director of Community Development, Jamie, and we all worked on this, and the idea is to streamline the meeting process and have things run as smoothly as possible in a logical order. So we've added some things and gotten rid of some things. I don't know if you had a chance to read my memo ahead of time or not, but I will just go through these. Please stop me if you have any questions about my changes or about your bylaws. The first thing I did was an overall global change. Ashley is your clerk, and she wants to be known as your clerk, and the word secretary was in there as well as clerk, so I just made a global change, and she's now officially your clerk everywhere in your bylaws, so we know what to call her. And anybody who should ever take over for Ashley will then also be the clerk. It runs with the position. Public meetings, under section two, the first change was I moved cancellations for inclement weather up because it seemed to be logical to put it where it was. We were talking about the meetings and when they happen and where they happen and how they happen, and this seemed to fit in with that. So I made that change. The second change, maybe the biggest one in here, is the order of business, and if you go to page, if you want to follow along, it's on page four. In discussion with Ms. Parker and Ms. Sherry, we decided that some of the items on this list were a bit redundant, and I suggested, and they agreed, that we change the order of business so that the first thing you do when you meet is your administrative stuff, right? We do the invocation and we do the pledge, and then you want to approve your minutes, and then you really want to hear at that point from the director, I believe, because you want to hear her announcements, you want to hear the report she has to give you. That's all an administrative function, doesn't really require a vote from you. It just requires some listening and some reception of what people have to say. So I moved that all up front. Next comes citizen comment period, and this is not citizen comment period for public hearings, it's just general citizen comment period. Generally, again, almost everybody's here at that point in time. It's early on in the meeting. They get to speak and say whatever it is they want to say, and then they can decide whether they want to stay, because maybe they just came because they wanted to tell you something and inform you about something. After that, we move into unfinished business. This makes sense to us because if you've carried something over from a prior meeting, we probably should deal with that before we get on to any new business. So we move that up in the order of business, and then, of course, your new business, which will be any requests for deferrals, additions, deletions, or changes to the order of the public hearing, and then you'll hold your public hearings. I believe you know, but I will remind you, that on any agenda, when you get to the meeting that night, if there's a reason to change the order, a motion can be made to change the order of the agenda to meet a need, either yours or perhaps an applicant's, for a public hearing, and you can vote on that and approve to change where in this list something happens, if you'd like to do that. You have that ability. So that is probably the biggest change in your bylaws for you to consider. The other changes made, then if you go to section two point ten, which is on page, I blocked out my page number, on page five, it's on page five under participation by electronic communication. So two of you can participate remotely, all right, and the reasons you can participate are listed in two-ten-A-two. The Code of Virginia was updated this year to add a third reason that would allow you to participate, and the board's bylaws were also changed, and again, generally, I understand you like to be in sync with what the board has done, so I made these changes here, and you can now not only participate remotely, electronically, if you have a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition, a family member has a medical condition that requires the commissioner to provide care for the family member, or three, the commissioner is a caregiver who must provide care for a person with a disability at the time of the public meeting. Now, I was asked, how do we define disability? Turns out, the Virginia Code does that for us, and a person with a disability is anyone who has a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more of their major life activities, or that there is a record of such impairment. So you can be temporarily disabled, you can be permanently disabled, and a person with a disability will be defined as such under the Virginia Code. What you should know is for quorum purposes, and this goes over to two-ten-B-two, which is on the following page, at the top of page six, for quorum purposes, the only, of those three means of, I'm sorry, of those three reasons for participating electronically, two of them will count for quorum. A remote member counts towards the quorum if the member is participating remotely either because the commissioner is the person with the disability or is caring for a person with a disability, and again, that disability definition stands in the Virginia Code. So the only two of you can participate remotely, though those are, you have three ways, three reasons that will allow, still allow your participation electronically, two of them will count for quorum purposes, okay? And the very last thing is, in the meeting minutes, it needs to be recorded that you are participating remotely, and you need to disclose where you're participating from. You do not need to disclose the disability, you did not, and even your location can be a general description, right? If you're, you're not going to participate if you're sitting in the ICU, but, right, you can say you're at the hospital, you can say you're at a friend's house, you don't, right, but you do need, and that will be recorded in the minutes, so that's for public knowledge at that point, to meet the requirements of FOIA. And the very last change I made, oh, nope, sorry, I also made a change in section four, addressing the commission. There are two times that citizens address the commission. First time is the open citizen comment period, second time is citizen comment period during the public hearing, okay? And all we did, I did this with their help, all we did was sort of codify in your bylaws the practice that you're actually engaging in now. A person can stand up, they get three minutes to speak, right? People are allowed to cede time to a speaker for a maximum of ten minutes. Every person who stands up and identifies themselves and says, I'm ceding my time, two minutes will be added to the speaker's time. This actually is now expressly stated in your bylaws. The other thing that it allows for, and again, the Board of Directors did this, so I added this in here, persons who wish to present using a video, audio, slides, or other presentation as part of their remarks are allowed to do so. They must submit their materials electronic to the Planning Commission clerk by noon the day before the Planning Commission meeting. If they don't do that, by that time, they will not be allowed to present at the meeting in that manner. The board had discussion, and again, the three of us had discussion, that people often want to show you pictures of something, or they want to show you a video to express the concern that they have, and we believed you would want to see that, if that's what they had to do. So we've included that, and that's, both of those are included in the open citizen comment period and at the time of the public hearing. And then the very last change is, the very last thing, and it just sort of expressly states what my role is, I'm your parliamentarian. I'm the designee of the county attorney's office, and my role here generally is to be your parliamentarian and to help you with motions, the order of voting on things, if there are questions about that, and of course, I'll help you in any other way if need be. Mr. Kimmerly?
To be exact, it's not that you are the parliamentarian, it's that the position is the parliamentarian?
It is the county attorney or her, at this point, her designee, and I happen to be, as the deputy county attorney, her designee. So as long as I'm sitting in this chair, but yes, whichever attorney is sitting in this chair will act as your parliamentarian.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Did anybody else have any more questions? Very good. Thank you very much. What I need to tell you is, if you like these, you will, somebody will make a motion to approve, you'll vote on these tonight, and these will go into effect at the next meeting. If you desire changes, then you should have a discussion about that, and we will come back then with a red line reflecting whatever changes are voted on by the commission that they want to their bylaws.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Spalding, for your hard work and staff as well, putting together the changes to the bylaws, much-needed changes, and I think this will definitely make us run smoother. Are there any comments, any questions for Ms. Spalding? If not, can someone make a motion?
I move that the commission adopt the Planning Commission bylaws and rules of procedure as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Kimmerly?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Patuck?
Aye.
Mr. Cosby?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item of new business is adoption of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six Planning Commission regular meeting calendar. On the last page of your packet, you will find the proposed Planning Commission meeting calendar. It's also displayed on the screen. Everything remains the same, third Thursday at six o'clock, except for our June meeting. The third Thursday is a holiday, Juneteenth, so we do have that tentatively scheduled for Tuesday instead of Thursday.
Are there any comments or questions concerning our calendar?
No.
If not, could I have a motion, please, to adopt?
I move that the commission adopt the resolution establishing the Planning Commission's two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Cosby?
Aye.
Mr. Patuck?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Kimmerly?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is citizen comment period. Per the Planning Commission bylaws, section four, addressing the commission public comments, four point one, generally, all persons who speak before the commission during the citizen comment period or a public hearing shall do so from the lectern and furnish their names and addresses to the commission. A speaker shall only speak once on any item unless the commission asks the speaker to answer questions. No person may address the commission unless they have first been recognized by the chair. Each person who desires to speak shall be given time to present oral or written comments. Comments shall be directed to the commission and not the audience. Four point two, citizen comment period. The citizen comment period provides a public forum for the commission to hear from citizens about matters pertinent to the activities, issues, or policies of the commission. The citizen comment period is limited to matters that are not scheduled for public hearing on the meeting's agenda.
If anyone wishes to speak in the citizen comment period, please come forward and state your name first, your address, and then you will have three minutes to speak. The green light indicates when you are able to start those three minutes. The yellow light indicates when one minute is remaining, and the red light indicates when you're out of time. Anyone wishing to speak tonight? Seeing none, we will close the citizen comment period.
We do not have any requests to defer additions, deletions, or changes to the order of the public hearings. And we also do not have any public hearing items on tonight's agenda. Our next item is other business. We have a director update from Ms. Sherry.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Before I provide my update, I too would like to thank Mr. Patuck for his services chair this past year, and I look forward to working with both Chair Cosby and Madam Vice Chair Kowalski. All that's a bit of a mouthful. I'll get used to it by the time that your term is over, but congratulations, and I do look forward to working with both of you. So on the screen, I have a list of upcoming public meetings that I'd like to share with you and those in the audience and those watching virtually. The May sixth Board of Supervisors meeting, there will be a daytime meeting, the time to be determined, but there will be, there will be no public hearings that evening, so there will be no six o'clock meeting. At your all's next meeting, May fifteenth, there is one application scheduled to be heard. It's the Markel Eagle Advisors LLC with the project name Highland, Highfield, excuse me. This is in District Four, and the request is to rezone a piece of property to RPUD, which is the Residential Plan Unit Development, for a one hundred and thirty-eight lot subdivision on Rockville Road. There are two community meetings I wanted to also make you aware of. The first one coming up is in reference to an application by KRLB Real Estate Holings of Rockville LLC. This is located in District Four. They are proposing to rezone a piece of property to Resident, excuse me, Industrial Limited, no, Industrial General, excuse me, for an industrial park. This is on Ashland Road, and the time and date for that is April twenty-fourth at six P.M. The location for this meeting will be Grace Chinese Baptist Church, located at eight-five-zero Broad Street Road. And next, we have another community meeting. This is a pre-application by Benedictine School of Richmond. The property is located in District Five. They are requesting to amend an existing conditional use permit for the school to remove the limit on students. Their community meeting will be held on April thirtieth at six P.M. This will be held at Benedictine. And that concludes my update. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of other business is the utility master plan update provided by Acting Director of Public Utilities and County Engineer, Mr. Wayne Stevens.
Good evening, Chairman Cosby, members of the board, or commission, pardon me, this is the first time I've spoken for you. I usually speak for the board. I am the Director of Public Utilities. About a month ago, Jamie asked me if I wouldn't mind covering a little bit of information on master planning for public utilities, and since I'm always willing to talk about public utilities, I jumped at the chance. The first thing we'll talk about is why have a utility master plan in the first place? Why are you going to spend tens of thousands of dollars to have an engineering firm or a consultant look at all of your planning documents and come up with this? The main reason is to provide you a framework to ensure that you can develop your public utilities to be reliably, reliable and efficient, serving current and future needs. It also provides us guidance when we're sizing pipelines, pump stations, and things like that. It definitely provides us assistance in creating our capital improvements program, or plan, excuse me, and our replacement and renewal plan. And it's one of the many tools that you have, we all have, for successfully implementing the county's comprehensive plan. Now, what is a utility master plan? I'm going to go ahead and read it word for word. A utility master plan is a roadmap for planning upgrades, improvements, and expansions to the county's water and sewer utility systems to meet the current and future needs of the county as outlined in the comprehensive plan. You see the items here that are included. Basically, usually include an overview of your existing systems and talk them up, especially if they're doing well. You come up with projections for future demands based on the planning documents that the county has adopted. Your engineer will come up with proposed system upgrades and improvements that'll allow you to do these things to provide future service. In this modern day and age, we also do computer modeling of all of our water and sewer systems, and we come up with some conceptual cost estimates for the projects that our consultant has proposed. So I'll go over, the overview of existing systems, you pretty much look at the condition of all your existing facilities. That's your water lines, storage tanks, sewage pump stations, water booster stations, treatment facilities, if you have any. We do not. We're fortunate, actually, in that way, and unfortunate in a way, but we can discuss all that some other time. You review our maintenance records, where we're having water line breaks, where things are breaking down to identify problem areas. We update our existing system maps to include everything that's been constructed since the last update to the plan, and again, it recommends system renovations, repairs, and operational changes to the existing system. Future demand projections are basically, the consultant coordinates with county staff extensively. They analyze the recent growth levels and patterns of development in the county, and a very important item, they review the latest comprehensive plan and identify changes since the previous utility master plan update, because I'll probably emphasize this a couple of times, because it's a very important thing. We do not just go out and plan to run water and sewer lines wherever the heck we feel like it. We pay very careful attention to the, the comprehensive plan is the lead document for this. We are reactive to the comprehensive plan. We base our master plan on the things that are planned for in that plan, the development areas, the different proposed uses, things like that. So we review all other available planning documents, transportation plans, emergency services. Parks and Rec is going to have a master plan here pretty soon that I'm going to be able to review and see what we might be able to do to help them bring services to the places that they develop, and of course, the schools. We use all of this collected information to develop some projections for what our future water and sewer demands are going to be. Post-system upgrades and improvements, follow that. Use, you evaluate proposed projects from the previous U M, utilities master plan to make sure that they're all still valid. I mean, it may be that county decided, well, somebody decided they wanted their property downzoned, or the county adjusted the limits of the T C S D or something like that, but look at all the proposed projects, make sure that you still, that there's still something that you need to do. You compare those current projects to your current or latest growth projections and the latest comp plan, once again. You revise, update, reprioritize the projects as needed. Then you use the future demand projections that you previously did to develop, conceptualize, prioritize new and/or expanded projects. And then the last thing we do, once again, we review all proposed projects for conformance with the latest comprehensive plan. You don't need to run a twenty-four-inch water line right up to the edge of the T C S D, because that's going to give an indication to somebody that you plan on taking that thing out there further. Water lines can get smaller as you go out further to the limits of your, of your service area. And then basically, we finalize the list of our proposed system upgrades, finalize the prioritization, and then they publish it. Computer modeling involves basically entering a huge amount of data on all of your line sizes, slopes for gravity sewer lines, sorry, pipe materials, things like that, pump stations and their capacities, and you basically model how the system operates on a given day. We actually use real customer usage numbers, which Leslie actually collects for us, when we do our modeling, so we don't predict that, you know, everybody's using two hundred and fifty gallons a day of usage or whatever. We use real, honest-to-gosh meter readings for each section of the model. We then calibrate our existing model again after we've added the stuff that we built since last time, and then our consultant will prepare models for that incorporate both our future growth projections and the proposed upgrades that we've come up with previously. And of course, conceptual estimates of project costs are, you use your recent design and construction cost data and look at how high inflation has gone over the last few years, and then you jack your numbers up, and then the Board of Supervisors asks why it's getting so expensive. Okay, what a utility master plan is not, and I think this is an important thing for every people to know, because I occasionally have citizens that, well, they insinuate at least, that you might be using utilities to lead the growth instead of the growth. A utility master plan is not a plan to expand water and sewer utilities throughout the county. It does not include planning, zoning, or development policy recommendations. Again, we're completely reactive to what you, the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, tell us is the vision and direction of the development in the county. We do not propose expansion of public utilities outside designated development areas as identified in the comp plan, and it is not intended to be implemented independently from the county's comprehensive plan. It's intended to be tied very tightly and closely to it. A little bit of a history of our utility master plan, and I don't know, somebody who's been here fifty years might be able to stand up and tell me I'm wrong, but my understanding is the first actual utilities master plan that the county adopted was in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, we had about thirteen hundred customers countywide, a couple hundred here in the courthouse, a little over a thousand out in the East End. I came here in two thousand and eighteen, growth was kicking right along, and in the, on the two thousand and twenty, we did our first. And in the, on the twenty-twenty, we did our first update to the master plan, and at that time, our customer base had grown to about seventeen-hundred-and-eighty customers countywide. And today, twenty-twenty-five, we're underway on our twenty-twenty-five, our, our second utility master plan. And as of the, as of today, we have right around twenty-nine-hundred customers. So you can see the level of growth that we've had, and I'm showing you this to emphasize how important it is to continue to plan for our future. Because when you practically double your customer base over a ten-year period, that's a fair amount of growth. Here's just some information of, on our water systems. Again, ties, two-hundred-and-fifty customers on the Goochlin Courthouse water system in twenty fifteen, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven this year. That's almost complete, uh, completely Swans Inn and Reed Marsh subdivisions. So the growth hasn't been quite as big down there. We had about ten miles of waterlines in the, in the area in twenty fifteen, and we now have added a couple miles in the last ten years. Sewer customers have grown similarly to the, to the water customers. And then, uh, I'll be honest with you, I was using some slides that had previously been prepared, and for some reason, they used pump stations on this instead of linear footage of, of sewer lines for the courthouse. But we had, we had two, two pump stations on our sewer system in the courthouse in two, twenty fifteen. We currently have four. We're, based on the comprehensive plan and where growth's going to go, we probably will end up over the next ten years or so adding about two more. The East End water and sewer systems are where the action has been for the most part. Back in twenty fifteen, we had just a little over a thousand total customers. We've got almost twenty-six-hundred now. We had about forty-nine miles of waterlines in twenty fifteen, most of which had been built back in the early two thousands when they took out the big T C S D loan. We've added, uh, what is that, twenty-seven miles of, uh, waterline in the last ten years. Sewer customers have grown commensurate with the water, and so has the, the linear footage of pipes. So we're, we're dealing with a much larger system than we were, when we were even five or ten years ago. I'm going to show you what some of the conclusions were from the twenty-twenty U M P update. They spoke in glowing terms of us, and I'm hoping that we're going to get that same conclusion with the new one, we'll see. But, uh, they, we, we did make some great strides between twenty fifteen and, and twenty-twenty. There were no emergency projects identified at that time. Probably most of you know that there was a really huge emergency project that just came up out of the blue for us back in twenty-twenty-two, when we had to start doing major repairs to the forty-eight-inch force main that, uh, that takes sewage from the eastern Goochlin Pump Station to Enrico County. That was a very expensive project, and it was very unexpected, and it's kind of upset our apple cart as far as our C I P funding goes. So we're going to be scrambling around looking for, for money to do these projects that we put off when, in order to do that. We will continue to embrace and utilize all existing and new recommendations in the, in the U M P, and I trust we're still going to be in good shape moving forward because I'm doing my best to make sure that happens. What's new for the twenty-twenty-five master plan? We're expanding our replacement and renewal section. Now, when you build a brand-new facility, it's called C I P. You all know that, capital improvement. When you have a twenty-five-year-old sewage pump station that needs to have its pumps replaced and needs to have its control updated, need to have its building painted, you know, or whatever, that's a replacement rehabil, some people call it replacement, rehabilitation, and some people call it replacement and renewal. I usually use replace and renewal for R and R. There will be a new section to include potential options for providing public water sewer service to the Oilville area, which is identified as a major village in the comp plan. This is the first time. This is actually in response to a request from the, uh, the Economic Development Director. She's been receiving some inquiries from people about what might be able to happen in Oilville if we actually had public water and sewer. So we've got a little bit of a, of a preliminary study going on right now to look at ways we might be able to do it, and we're going to fold that into the master plan update so that we may have some recommendations or even a possible plan for how we might do that over the next few years. Right now, this is not more of an operational thing, but we're investigating potential revisions to our pressure zones on the East End. We've got some pressure issues mostly caused by high flows during irrigation periods and things like that. So, and without going out and putting in enormous oversized waterlines, we're trying to find ways that we can help alleviate those issues. And of course, that we're going to incorporate the conclusions and recommendations from two other recent studies that we did on the East End. One is called the System Resiliency Evaluation. That's where our, uh, the engineer that keeps our water models for us actually did some catastrophic failure analysis at some key points in the system. What happens if the twenty-four-inch waterline along two-eight-eight breaks at Broad Street? And what happens to the system? What needs to be done? What happens if it breaks further down? What happens if the E G P S is upset? Things like that. So we, um, we're going to, they made some recommendations for some, for some, some small, some large projects that will, would help us with our system resiliency. So we're going to see if we can incorporate those into the master plan as well. And then the System Storage Evaluation helped us identify that we're actually maybe even a little bit behind on, on developing some additional storage for the East End system. We've got the half-million gallon tank up at Centerville. And we've got a little bit, a couple of smaller storage tanks around, but, um, we do have one C I P that we're pursuing. It's one that got delayed a little bit during the E G P S force main emergency, but we'll be building a new storage tank and booster station facility at, at our Ridgefield connection to Enrico County. And I, I don't know, I'm assuming you all know some things about the system that you may not know, but we buy all of our water from Enrico. And there are four points on the west end of the Enrico system and the east end of our system where we connect to Enrico and can bring water into the county. One of them is up on Route two-fifty. We have a, a large water booster station up there, so we can not only have water flow into the county, we can control the flow rate, and we use that to pump and fill up the Centerville Storage Tank. There is another connection at, in the Ridgefield, it's down near Tuckahoe Creek Parkway, where it was originally supposed to be, I think, the Ridgefield Parkway and go over into Enrico County and no longer does. We actually have a connection there as well. That one has no power to it, so we can only take what Enrico's system can offer. Hydraulically, if the pressure is about the same on both sides, we're not going to be bringing very much water in. So we'll be building a booster station, very much like the two-fifty booster station, down that way to help better serve the West Creek and River Road pressure zones. And that, that, that's part of what we'll be tying in when we do our, when we bring our System Storage Evaluation into the master plan. And, uh, key takeaways, again, U M P is expensive to do, but it provides us a framework for orderly and efficient development of our systems. The U, Utilities Master Plan should always be reactive to the comprehensive plan. We use the comprehensive plan to develop the U M P, never the other way around. The U M P will, also allows the county to, it allows the county to be proactive, though, in providing the necessary public and water infrastructure that we need to serve the growth anticipated in that, in that comp plan. And that's about it. I, uh, know that went kind of quickly. I was told I only had ten minutes, so I tried to stay within that. But are there any questions? Does anybody? And it doesn't have to be about this, because this is the first time I've ever spoken to you. I don't know if the previous directors spoke before you folks very often, but, um, I come into meetings a lot of times assuming people know things they don't know about our water and sewer system. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about what I just presented to you or anything else that might be bothering you or that you might be wondering about.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Quick question. In terms of the System Resiliency Evaluation and the Storage Evaluation, when were they done?
Those were done last year. So we're, we're getting them incorporated pretty quickly, actually.
Thank you.
The month and all the time has, has kind of gone away from my brain, but when the Richmond Water Crisis happened, right? We had Enrico, and then it came over into Goochlin. Is there any, um, reactive steps that could be taken so we don't have to do that, you know?
Well.
Depend upon, depend upon, depend upon, or is it, that's just?
Right now, it would be tough. If, if you get enough notice and you have enough storage on our side of the county line, you could potentially close the connections off between Enrico and us and keep any contaminated water from making it into the county. The issue there, though, is do you have enough storage? Typically, a water system only has enough storage for one or two days' worth of use. So if Enrico is having a problem, whether it's caused by Richmond or anybody else, and they're going to go on a boil water notice that's going to last more than about two days, it really wouldn't do us a tremendous amount of good because at some point, we'd have to open up one of the connections and let water come in. But it's a little more nuanced than that because if, and right, there are different pressure zones in different water systems, and that means that, um, because of elevation changes, the, the water pressure at, at a given house here or at a lower elevation may be the same, but what they call the hydraulic grade line or the, the, the level of the water relative to the earth's surface is higher or lower depending upon the elevation. And I think Enrico feeds us from two or three different of their pressure zones. Now, it's not possible, hydraulically or physically, for water to transfer from a low-pressure zone to a higher-pressure zone unless, well, unless you've got a pump, and then you've effectively not turned it from a low-pressure zone into a high-pressure zone. So if, for instance, Enrico was having a problem at the far southwestern end of their system, and we got enough, a notice of it, we could cut off our River Road connection, say, leave the other ones in place, route, no, open and close a couple of valves to route additional water down towards River Road that would normally be coming in through the other connection and avoid having to follow them. This past time, um, things got a bit chaotic. I know Enrico, um, didn't get apparently as, all, all as much notices they would have liked from Richmond, which means we didn't get as much notice as we would have liked from Enrico. And I was sitting at my desk when a customer called and said, "Enrico just said they're going on a countywide boil water notice. Are we going on one? Because I know we get all our water from Enrico." And I, I had heard about the boil water notice on the southeastern end of their system down near Richmond that morning, but I said, "Okay." So I'm clicking around online, trying to find a television station, and sure enough, they're giving a press conference, and they had not called us beforehand. And, uh, out of an abundance of caution, I think is the term they always use, we went ahead and went on a boil water notice because, but as it turns out, hydraulic analysis later, there was virtually no chance for any contaminated water from Richmond to have made it into our system. It was just done out of, out of abundance of caution and to keep people from, uh, from, well, basically, to be perfectly blunt, panicking.
I want to thank you for the summary. Where can I see the entire plan?
It is online, the current one, the twenty-twenty. If you go to the county's website, there, we have our own landing page for public utilities. I think over on the left side, there's a direct link to it. If not, you have my card.
I do, oh.
I've left one up on the desk for each of you. Send me an email, and I'll, I'll email you a PDF copy of it. It's really not particularly huge, so.
All right, and this gets me the, this, on the website, it'll get me to the old one.
Yes, the, we, we're not far enough along. In fact, I wanted to make sure, you know, this was sort of like a little primer on master planning and why you do it and what for us. I'll be happy to come back before you in a couple of months to cover the progress that we've made on the, on the, because we've really more or less just started on the update, the twenty-twenty-five update.
Well, I'll start with the old one, thank you.
Sure. Any, anybody else?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
The water potential to Oilville, would that be essentially an extension of the T S C D?
Um, possibly. That's one of the ways. The, the problem is what they call water age, because the, the longer water has been away from the point where it was treated, treated and not consumed, your chlorine residuals start to deteriorate, and, and other things start to happen chemically to the water that may allow some unpleasant things to grow. So you don't really want your water to be old. If we were to transfer water, say, from the T C S D to Oilville, it, it would, my, well, my proposal would be to set it up clearly as a transfer-type event. There would be no connections in between unless the county decided they wanted to create a new development area, and then we would re-treat the water in Oilville because of the water age issue. Wouldn't have to treat it as much as they had to in Enrico to send it to us, but we'd have to do some, some re-treatment and some, you know, re-chlorination and things like that to make it, make it meet drinking water standards once it got to Oilville. Because it, it's a fairly far away from anywhere where there's already public utilities. So we're going to have some challenges doing that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our final item of other business this evening is the Parks and Rec Master Plan Update provided by Director of Parks and Rec, Mr. Tom Cock.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Deputy County Spalding. Thank you very much for inviting me to speak. Similar to Wayne, um, we have been, and have recently started a master plan update project to our five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. That plan is obviously specific to Parks and Recreation, and, um, the plans that we've had previously in the county were all done in-house. This is the first time that we've actually contracted out, similar to Wayne, to bring in some consultants to help us with the project. We have brought in both Prose Consulting, who subcontracted some work to Kimley and Horn, as well as the E T C Institute, mostly for the survey aspect that I'll talk about. But the Q R code there takes you to our Linktree that has only a survey for community members or you all to provide feedback later on. If you're like me, I'll think about something on the way home or later or tomorrow. You can add feedback there. There's also a copy of the presentation that I'm giving tonight, as well as a copy of the document that I have for you all, which I'll, um, talk about as, as we go through this. So, oh, and also on that Q R code, sorry, can I go back? And also on that Q R code, we use that as a landing page for a lot of promotion and marketing for our department. So if you kind of scroll down, you'll see things like some of the upcoming events we have. We have one in two days, which is an extreme egg hunt at Tucker, Tucker Park at Henrock Park, as well as our summer concert series, which starts the following Friday, which we're excited about. But anyway, it's a good landing page, not only to kind of stay current on the project, this project itself, but just anything that's related to Parks and Recreation. So, um, a little different from Wayne, when we started our project, the first thing we did was communicate with people. So that was not only internal stakeholders in the county, but external stakeholders. You all, as the Planning Commission, were one of those. We had a meeting with our consultant to kind of explain some of the things that Wayne actually went over tonight, which is what the project is, what it isn't, or some of the expectations, a, a quick review of the timeline and a few of those types of categories. So just as a refresher, I wanted to go over the project team. This is kind of the core group of folks that are going to be working on, or have been working on this, myself included, and I don't know why Josh Gillespie isn't listed on there, but he is obviously on the core team, um, as well as county, uh, county leadership. But we also have a kind of a secondary team that's operating as a support structure. You can see kind of a variety of folks that work in the county that are part of that. They're kind of jumping in and out, but obviously staying informed as it goes to help us either collect resources or talk about some of the historical perspectives of the county as relates to Parks and Recreation. So with some of the internal stakeholders, Board of Supervisors, County Administration, Planning Commission, as you all, Recreation Advisory Commission, we have our own commission of folks, Parks and Recreation Leadership, Public Safety and Health and Human Services. Those are kind of the ma, major players in our internal stakeholder list that we have that we carry going into this project and that we've already started to talk and have either meetings with or communications with. In Parks and Recreation, we have a lot of external stakeholders. So these are groups in the community, whether local organizations, nonprofit, you'll see the schools are listed, you'll see youth sports organizations, Historical Society, Monica Morris Soil District, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I won't read them all, but these are folks that it's, it's sometimes we bump shoulders with and operate very frequently with, whether they're operating in our spaces, maybe it's something where it's more on an annual basis for special events. Perhaps they're a partner that we bring in, like the V A Natural Match, uh, Master Naturalists to help us remove invasive species from our parks. But anyway, we wanted to make sure we captured as many opinions or perspectives as possible, which is kind of why we started with this mentality of communicating first. So all these external stakeholder groups and internal were invited to come speak to us and the consultants to talk about how Parks and Rec is, plays a role in their community, well, from their community perspective as well as their organizational perspective, which was very interesting. I learned a lot, as only being the Parks Director for a year and a half. This is great timing to start the job and have to do this because I got to meet everybody in about a three-day window and learn a lot, but these people, we, we, you know, we function and operate with them pretty frequently. So what have we been doing so far, which is January to May, or sorry, January to March? We had those project kicked-off meetings with those internal and external stakeholder groups. We held two Community Connect Events where they're basically similar to town halls. We had one at the Sports Complex and one at Salem Baptist Church. I thought they were pretty well-attended. We collected some feedback from the community, and we also educated. Uh, we collected some feedback from the community and we also educated them on what the plan is, uh, and what it means for them. We also, at that time, were developing the statistically valid survey that will go out to the commu- uh, that will go out to the community. In April, which is kind of where we are now, um, that statistically valid survey is being distributed. It's probably in the mail right now. If not, um, it should be landing mailboxes by the end of next week. Um, that was something that was developed internally, obviously, uh, in the county as well as with Prose Consulting and E T C, who will be administering that survey and collecting the results. Uh, that survey is anonymous and since it's statistically valid, not every community member will receive it. Um, we do plan to open up, uh, the same survey to the general public a little bit later. We just don't want there to be any confusion with folks that would receive this survey. We want them to complete it and return it. Once we have enough responses to, uh, basically achieve validity, then we will be, uh, continue our collection with the, with the larger general public. One thing we're working on is underway now is our benchmarking analysis. So that is a selection of five similar municipalities and localities that are either, uh, kind of on par with us or ones that we aspire to be, mostly from a Parks and Rec perspective, but a lot of the parameters that we use to identify those are the same ones you'd probably use in some of the other master plan or strategic plans, kind of going off of population and, and all the kind of down the ladder. And then we get to Parks and Rec. Do they have a river, you know, that borders their entire county? How many parks do they have? Uh, so we kind of, you know, went through some of those, uh, benchmarking initial checks. Facility evaluations, we're about eighty percent done with those. Kimley and Horn came, as well as Prose Consulting, and we toured all of our spaces. So all of our parks, all of our facilities, which would be the sports complex and Central High School. So our indoor and outdoor spaces. And we basically evaluated everything. So, uh, condition of playground, condition of trails, benches, I mean, everything, birdhouses, dog parks, I mean, all of it. Um, just to kind of get an evaluation on, um, on, on all of that, as well as how we're utilizing our spaces currently, which is something I'll talk about a little more here. But these are two examples that aren't ours, but, um, is what it would look like when it comes back and how they're categorized, um, from the statistically valid survey. Uh, one of those being top priorities for investment for programs and activities, while the other being top priorities, investment for facilities and amenities, based on the community's response and ones it needs. So, May through July, which is what's coming up next, uh, we're going to review the results of that facility evaluation. We're gonna go through a level of service workshop, uh, with the consultants. And that is more so about how we operate now, based on the ones and needs of the community. What is our level of service? What are we meeting? What are we not meeting? What are we doing well? What are we doing poorly or that could use some level of improvement? Um, hopefully, uh, in July, we'll be able to have enough responses to review, uh, the initial, uh, results of the statistically valid survey. The benchmarking analysis should be completed by then. And we will start, uh, in July to, uh, the process to develop our capital improvement project plan. In the world of Parks and Recreation in Goochlin, we haven't had a lot of C I Ps in the past two or three years. Um, C I Ps have obviously been challenging for the county in general. Uh, this is kind of a refresh for us. We've removed some of those. Um, some of our C I Ps have been lingering for quite a while. And it's just a good opportunity for us to match those against what we, what we need today and to kind of reset that five to ten year or beyond outlook. Um, and that would include, you know, kind of smaller, low-hanging fruit projects, as well as any kind of future planning or facilities that, that may be needed. Just a quick snapshot of the project overview, uh, and some friendly reminders. One is, is this, you know, this master plan, uh, hopefully would be adopted in November. That's the timeline we're shooting for. Um, it's a ten-year, five to ten-year planning horizon. Uh, the, the goal for us and, uh, for Prose Consulting is for it to be realistic for Goochlin and who we are today, for it to be implementable and then obviously financially sustainable. Uh, if there are, uh, funding that, funding that's needed to make those goals a reality, uh, once we kind of, uh, narrow out everything in the plan. Do you all have any questions for me about anything? Anything in general for Parks and Recreation? Oh, but actually, before you, just kidding, not yet. So this, uh, is a friendly take-home, um, read at your leisure document. So the National Parks, National Recreation and Parks Association is one of two kind of, uh, major groups that we belong to as a professional organization. Uh, this is their twenty twenty-four performance review. So what we do in Goochlin is we submit our data to this every year. And this is a collection of Parks and Recreation, both cities and counties and all kinds of folks across the country of every different size. So super small to, you know, Baltimore or Austin, Texas or whatever. And, um, I think it's really interesting for folks that, um, that, that may want to kind of, that, that like data uh, or would like to dive into, uh, the world I work in every day a little bit further. Um, they do a really good job of breaking that down, um, breaking, breaking down all those results into categories that, that we would actually fit in based on a number of things, but usually it's population size. Um, and then some of the categories that I always enjoy looking at are resi- uh, amount of residents per park, amount of acreage per park, uh, acres of parkland per one thousand residents, percentage of agencies offering summer camps, the amount or level of full-time equivalent employees per ten thousand residents, operational expenditures per capita, revenue to operating expenditures and their cost recovery. And it's, it's just a lot of good data. Um, and it's kind of fun to obviously compare yourself to others. Uh, but at the same time, you know, what we do, we understand in our department that Goochlin's, Goochlin's pretty unique. Um, but it's just, it's another way that we hope to incorporate, uh, incorporate this into the master plan to help us get a hol- holistic kind of view of where we are today and where we, where we might be going in the future or where we're falling short today. So, and now, uh, questions? If you have any of your comments or any feedback for the plan?
Yeah, quick question for you. In terms of the benchmark analysis, um, what counties or cities or locations are you looking?
Yeah, so, um, we, we are, the first thing I would say is I would, I would love to take any recommendations you have, uh, for us to go back and look at. But we have looked, um, in Virginia as kind of our primary location to look. North Carolina, Tennessee, South Carolin- or sorry, yeah, North Carolina, Tennessee and, uh, Georgia. Um, the list that we started with was probably in the ballpark of like fifteen or so that we, that we kind of initially narrowed down. Um, but ones that are in Virginia that we are looking at, and again, lists as a finalized, would be Louisa. Uh, we did look at Powhatan, um, but Powhatan's just slid down the list a little bit further. But Baca, I'm gonna have to ask you, Josh, how do you say it? Bu- Baca, Baca Tot? Baca Tot, sorry. What is it? Bogotot? Sorry. I know that. But what he said, um, was one of those, um, as well as, oh, gosh. Clark, yep, Clark was on the list. I should have brought the list. I knew I should have brought the list. The ones out of state were, uh, um, were ones I had never heard of. But a- anyway, the, uh, the goal is for us in about three weeks to have that list finalized. And I would be absolutely happy to share it with you all. Um, but, but where we are now is probably around the fifteen to sixteen mark. Um, the, the one thing about going out of state, which I don't think we're leaning that way, uh, Pearson County in North Carolina, they're coming back to me slowly, um, is it, is it can be pretty difficult to relate yourself to them because of how far out of state they are. Not to say it's impossible. It does take a lot of educating to show why we are similar. But truthfully, for, for where Goochlin is today, you know, you see that's, uh, more similar with like big cities where you really don't have a choice. You know, Charlottesville, for example, you kind of have to go outside of your bubble to find someone that kind of fits your, your size and scope. But here in Virginia, there, there are a lot of counties that, um, not, not, from what I've learned, not experiencing the amount of growth we have. But, um, but definitely when it comes to a number of other things and especially things in the realm of Parks and Recreation that we compare ourselves to. So, sorry, I couldn't answer the whole question today.
All right. Thank you.
So you said, uh, Powhatan, you started with that, but then you pushed it down the list. What do you, what, so why not? They, I mean, they're, share a river with us? I mean.
Yeah. Um, well, one of the reasons is, uh, that, that I, um, that I brought up, and not to say they won't make the list. I shouldn't, I should start with that, is, um, we already know a lot about them. Most people that are living in the county, probably not everyone, but they know the majority about them. So to burn our wheels and frankly spend the money to compare ourselves to someone that we're pretty familiar with. Um, I'm very familiar with the Parks and Rec Director in Powhatan. We've gone on a joint venture together to operate both farmers markets and a lot of people live in Powhatan. Um, but when we start to go down the list of comparables, just the initial list of whether it's the median household, uh, cost today, or it's the medium income, or it's, you know, depending on their size of parks and playgrounds and all those kind of things, um, uh, they're also about equal to us. And I also want to be careful not to pick a bunch of counties or recommend that we pick a bunch of counties that are, that we're standing shoulder-to-shoulder with because in five to ten years from now, it's where we're, you know, it's, it's who's in front of us that is doing things that are meeting the needs well of their community that have, you know, taken advantage of, you know, of, of, of a good plan or developing a good plan to follow than someone who's either equal to or, or lower than us. Because really, at that point, it's, you know, where our eyes are headed, you know, kind of faced forward somewhere for you all or just like you all here at the planning commission, so.
All right. I got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, two quick questions for you. Um, first of all, thank you. I'm at the park way more than probably anybody else wants to be. So I appreciate, you know, what you guys do and, you know, frequent, frequent flyer there. Um, is there any talk of the, the farmer's market now that we're down to one in Goochlin, correct?
Yeah, so.
Can you do that time or day or anything to make it more accessible, other than a Tuesday evening?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a, it's, it's not the first time I've heard that question, I should say. Um, when we, uh, first, uh, went down this, uh, road of, uh, absorbing the farmer's market into the county and taking that under our umbrella of responsibility, which, which is actually pretty common out in the world of Parks and Recreation. Um, the first issue we had was that, that the, the mannequin market is on private land. So, um, the amount of time we had to probably navigate a, a situation or an agreement, uh, we kind of tabled that for now. I do think that, um, preferably after we get through a season, so we, so we have a better grasp on, uh, how that operates, that I, I would like to see us expand those hours. We, we heavily entertain the Saturday scene. Um, it, it is successful and we've gotten a lot of good feedback from other localities that, that do it. Um, but we figured, especially from the vendor perspective, we had a, um, like a vendor orientation where we brought our vendors in. And we, we went to Powhatan, Powhatan came to ours, um, to kind of talk about everything. They, the, at least the vendors that we had were, were pretty comfortable with what they, with, with Tuesday, mostly because they travel. So they're, you know, they're going to Powhatan on Thursday, which is Powhatans. They're going to Richmond on Saturday, they're going to wherever. Um, so I think after going through the first season, uh, and not only getting feedback from the vendors, but from the community, I, I would, I would like to see us expand. Um, I think especially given our community and its real character, that, uh, farmer's market is right at home. And, and that was one of the reasons why we, we wanted to step in to continue to see it operate, so. As well as maybe some investments, you know, into the facility. But yeah.
Um, just sorry, one more thing. Um, and this is maybe just more of like a, um, uh, point other than a question or whatever. Um, making sure that our, our, our facilities are able to cater to, I know we can't always encompass all kids, but realizing that we have children with special needs that, um, may have, you know, those sensory issues or may be in a wheelchair that, that go to our parks and have absolutely nothing to do. And just being cognizant of the fact, um, that trying to reach more of that population because we do have those kids here. Um, you know, I, I think the new Goochlin Elementary School has maybe two playthings that a, that a child maybe in a wheelchair or, you know, disability can access, but just making sure that we have that for future use for other children.
Yeah, and, um.
And I'm sure you've thought of that, that's.
No, it's, it is a great point. And again, you're not one of the, you know, you're not the first person to mention that, especially in some of the town hall settings. Um, something as simple as like a, a fenced-in area, uh, that, you know, we, we don't have a, a playground that's fenced in, for example, or that is contained by a barrier. And for, uh, certain families with, you know, certain kids that may have disabilities, that, that alone is, is helpful, let alone the adapt, you know, having adaptive equipment or playgrounds or even when we look at our trails that we have right now, um, you know, just the walkability of those, whether it's a trail or it's a, you know, it's a, uh, any kind of passageway. Um, and that's as simple as the material that we've chosen or, or could choose. Um, but, but when you, when you look at that pack and you look at what some other people do, some of, you know, some people do things better than others, not saying that we need everything that everyone else has. But that is a category that I think that you will definitely see, um, I would hope, higher on the list of goals to accomplish over the next X amount of time. Um, you know, anything we would build today, I would highly encourage our county to, to focus on the accessibility aspect of it. Um, we, uh, for good reasons and bad reasons, you know, we continue to use really old buildings for things. Old elementary schools, this is an old school. And the times where certain things are built, you know, that, that those things may not have been thought of. So if we built something new today or replaced something like a playground, which we have some that are, that are due for replacement, I think it's really important that we, we focus on that. Not saying we have to build a miracle field and, and you go crazy, but, uh, we work really well with the Reg- uh, Region Six Special Olympics folks. We help them host events, uh, a lot of times it's fundraising, their basketball team practices in our gym in season, et cetera. Um, but I, I do think that's something that we should be focused on when we, you know, when we look at this, when we look at this plan in our future, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
In regards to the survey, is there a minimum that the county's shooting for to make it valid?
Yeah, three hundred and seventy-four, I'm pretty sure is the number. Uh, but I can, I can double check that. We're sending out a little more than that, obviously, to make sure we get them back. Uh, but they, the, uh, E T C Institute purchases the addresses and sends them out. And, uh, and obvi- and another thing I'd mention is they obviously make sure it's balanced to make sure we have representation based on where that population density is. So like from like the east side versus west side, so.
Cool. Uh, one more question out of left field. Uh, has anyone from the county ever talked to the state that, um, where they own the old abandoned president encroachment?
Uh, not as far as I'm aware. Um, I'm sure I can answer that question, uh, to county leadership, but, um. Yeah. They do. Yeah. I've had some interesting questions that, from the public as, as this is going, but, um, I, that's the first time I've actually had that question, so I'm happy to look into it. If there's something somewhere that we can get our hands on, I'm more than happy to ask the, ask the question, so.
Thank you very much.